Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah. You know, it's just a five-minute thing.
Sure.
He never takes pity on me. He lets our meetings go super long. He doesn't care.
He's old. He's got kids. You know how it is.
Yeah. Hector. Hector's my favorite Symington.
That's what Danielle said. Everybody knew I would be here.
Okay, it's time. You ready? I'm ready to get my lights on. Okay.
I'll call the meeting of the Morgantown Planning Commission to order. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Morgantown Planning Commission. Please turn off all cell phones and other devices that need disrupting proceedings. The Planning Commission conducts business in the following order. There will be a general public comment portion when anyone who wishes to address the Planning Commission may do so, but only on matters that are not on the agenda. There will be a five-minute time limit for speakers. All recognized speakers must approach the podium, state their name and address for the record, and speak clearly into the microphone. Speakers are notified that irrelevant comments or comments of a personal nature or personal attacks may result in the speaker forfeiting their opportunity to participate in the general public comment portion. We review, amend, and approve the meetings, minutes of the previous meeting if we consider any unfinished business from previous meetings. We then move on to new business items. First, we introduce the item, and the Planning Division representative presents the staff report. Next, we ask the petitioner to make a presentation. Planning Commissioners may ask the petitioner questions at that time. I will then open a public hearing to hear testimony in support of or in opposition to the request. Rules regarding the public testimony are as follows. Anyone wishing to testify during the public hearing may do so once recognized. Each recognized speaker must approach the podium, state their name and address for the record, and speak clearly into the microphone. All comments must be addressed to the commission. Speakers are notified that any relevant comments or comments of a personal nature or personal attacks may result in the speaker forfeiting their opportunity to participate in the public hearing. All speakers will be limited to five minutes. If members of the commission have questions for the speaker, that time will not be counted towards the speaker's five minutes. If there are a large number of speakers, including many who are part of groups or organizations, I may, to avoid repetitive comments, elect to ask for a representative to speak on behalf of the group or organization. I may elect to recognize the applicant or agent at the end of the public hearing to provide rebuttal or additional comments, which will be limited to five minutes. If members of the commission have any questions of the applicant or agent, that time will not be counted toward the applicant or agent's five minutes. After all testimony is heard, I will declare the public hearing closed, and no further public comment will be permitted. At that time, no one in the audience may speak again unless the Planning Commissioner asks a question. If someone has asked a question, they must come to the microphone and identify themselves once again before answering. Next, the Planning Commission will discuss and take action on the application. Once the vote is final, members of the audience who were present for that particular case may leave if they wish. In order not to disrupt the meeting, people who choose to leave must go to the bottom of the stairs before carrying on a quiet discussion. Uncivil, unruly, or disruptive behavior at any time during the meeting is prohibited and will result in removal from this public meeting. Thank you for your consideration and respect for these proceedings and the opinions of all meeting participants.
Okay, the first, I guess, matters of business. Any general public comments for matters not on the agenda? Okay, and next we move to the approval of the October 12th meeting minutes.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mr. President, I had one amendment. I have a hard copy of it.
On the dais, but needed to affirm that the vote was taken to concur with Morgantown City Council's amendments to the comprehensive plan update. That was not reflected in the minutes.
Okay.
Move to approve as amended?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor? I abstained because I wasn't here. Next, we move on to unfinished business. It's RZ 23-04 Friendship Homes, Inc., 501 Van Vorsure.
As you can see here, we have, after the meeting with the Planning Commission on October 12th, the applicant amended their petition to reason the property from a pro district to an R3 multifamily residential district to enable the property to provide additional services in the community. In addition to continuing to make affordable housing units available to seniors, the applicant is interested in establishing a nursing home use that includes inpatient hospice care. Their current use nor proposed mix of uses at the facility are permitted in the pro district. For points of reference, again, on the screen and in the packet that I'm going to be following in terms of providing the staff report, you can see on the screen, this is an aerial view from the Mon County parcel viewer map of the property, as well as the existing zoning and the surrounding zoning districts in that general area of Van Vors, Patterson, and University Avenue. Again, both the current plan and the updated plan that's going through review at Morgantown City Council was reviewed to, in this process. And then you can see, this is a picture of the front of the property from Van Vors, looking up the driveway, which is the primary access point, and then this is taken from Windsor Street and Drummond Avenue, looking back towards Van Vors from the rear of the property. As it pertains to the 2013 plan, the area along Van Vors was identified as a commercial corridor, and growth was encouraged here. As such, the future land management plan identified the area along Van Vors as corridor enhancement, which is that yellow shade, or that pink shaded area on the screen. Corridor enhancement is defined as improving development along corridors with a mix of uses, increased density at major nodes or intersections, and roadway improvements to improve traffic flow and the pedestrian biking experience. Appropriate development typologies again include multifamily residential, civic and institutions, neighborhood center mixed use, community commercial, office research, and green space. It also met the two of the 11 outlined principles in the plan that describe how and where growth and development should occur in the community. As it pertains to the 2023 comprehensive plan, Morgantown 2033, the same area was defined as a commercial area. Furthermore, in terms of the growth framework map, the area was identified as a place to revitalize and approve. As such, it was classified as a corridor mixed use in the land development plan. Development typologies generally permitted include multifamily dwellings, civic institutional uses, commercial, office space, and open space. After review, the applicant's proposal still appears to be consistent with at least two of the land management plans guiding principles, number three and number six, in the comprehensive plan update. And that will conclude my report.
Good evening. Charlie Russell, I'm a lawyer.
Tony Johnson here on behalf of the applicant and West Virginia Carrying. Good seeing you all again. There's no football game tonight to get home to. So, yeah, so at the previous meeting, our original application was to change this property to a B2. And after review and discussion, the R3 also appears to fit our proposed uses, except the B2, we sorted one of the administrative office permitted use, which the R3 is not, but that is something that we can work around in the R3 district to allow for the nursing home use, which will be an inpatient hospice center. And the zoning ordinance doesn't define an inpatient hospice center and nursing home as what we all believe is best categorized as that use, as well as to continue the existing use of the property, which is a legal nonconforming use currently, of multifamily housing providing apartment living for seniors over 50. So, those two uses, nursing home, multifamily, is what we're here for, to make these permitted uses. And I think, as Ricky spelled out, that, you know, looking at the comprehensive plans, those uses fit nicely for this property. And I also noted in the 2033 comprehensive plan that this area of Van Vors is designated as sort of a healthcare district, which I think the nursing home use fits nicely into that. And lastly, I think with the R3 district and the current PRO district, I believe, hearing you all discussed, that that's a district that wants to be, you all want to examine after the comprehensive plan is passed. So, it was sort of suggesting that, at the last meeting, that if we get a B2 and you examine that process, you can change the zoning district again to something else. But the B2 being such an intensive use, there's concern of reducing the property's use and the value with that. So, if the R3 not being as an intensive use district, during your examination of the PRO district, if, probably, this property could be more intense than an R3. So, you know, whatever you do with the PRO district, I think those concerns of taking away value from the property are alleviated with the R3 designation. And lastly, I just, I think it's very important to note that this property is very distinct from the neighboring properties that are zoned PRO, in that there is no access to Drummond or Windsor avenues on the back of the property. If you see there, parcel 18 and 18.1, which are PRO, you know, their access is directly to that neighborhood, which I think the concern is to preserve that neighborhood. This property, we're looking at, just simply, there is no access, legal, I don't think there's legal access we could hook into Drummond or Windsor, even if we wanted to. So, I think that's very important to note, that this property is distinct in that sense. So, with that, I will invite Maileen Davis, who is the president and CEO of West Virginia Carrying, and she can explain a little bit more about the proposed uses. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everyone again. Thank you for entertaining our amendment to our discussion the last time. So, I'm Maileen Davis. I'm a registered nurse and have been with hospice for over 35 years, and so we're very excited about the potential of attaining this building and actually making it into something that's very much needed in West Virginia. In West Virginia, there are six hospice centers. One of them is in, the closest one would be in Elkins, West Virginia, that is operated by us since 2004, and so we really felt the void of having one to serve our patients and families in this area. And so, we're calling this the building that God picked out because we've been looking for a long time for a place that we could establish this, that would be convenient to the hospitals. And we had, as you might remember, the last time, we had both health systems here, both Mon Health and WVU Medicine that have been in support of this. And so, we really feel like this is very convenient to those uses and also to those folks that are, that live at home, which is really the goal of hospice care, is for people to, you know, be at home, but when they need to have their symptoms and physical pain managed, they could come to this place and get that done. And all the while, you know, this is a pretty big building. I mean, it's 60,000 square feet. And then, we do feel very good about the fact that we're the, we're going to honor the current tenants that are living there, that have been 55 years and older for some time, and that they can also just continue to live there. We do have it in our agreement with the Kiwanis Club, that are the owners of the building, and Jim Alexander let me know that he was planning to come tonight, but he had a family issue that came up. But that, they will still be there and will be able to upgrade their apartments, which have needed it for some time. Some of, Mr. DeMastor wasn't here last time, but the bathtubs are that 60s blue that are in, you know, that match the avocado green refrigerators that we all knew back in the day. So, at any rate, it's time for that to be upgraded. So, it would be an increased quality of life for those tenants. The rates, their rents are going to stay the same, but at the same time, we have this offering of a hospice center. There's one in Martinsburg, Huntington, Wheeling, Charleston, Beckley, and ours in Elkins. But Morgantown has not had a hospice center, and I think it's due time for us to do that. So, we're very excited about doing that, and we just feel like this is a continuation of our mission, and our hospice has been around 40 years. So, we're one of the oldest hospices in the state, and we feel like we have proven ourselves as something that we can pull this off. We're doing it in Elkins, and we feel like it'll be even more successful here in Morgantown.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah. I have a question, a quick question for the planner.
Thank you.
So, where's the nearest R3 to this?
The nearest R3 would probably be south of University Avenue.
How is this not spot zoning, then?
Because of the uses that are being proposed, and it's because it's a mix of uses, just because it's not abutting an adjacent property that has the same type of zoning district, it's not necessarily called mixed zoning or spot zoning if it's consistent with the city's comprehensive plan.
Okay. Anybody have, any questions for the planner?
Well, we're going to get public comments, so.
Okay. Any member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Okay, staff recommendations, please.
Zoning map amendment requests should be evaluated on their land use merits alone. Development intentions are extraneous, and the commission should consider the request on its merits as a land use decision. In conducting such an analysis, the commission should determine if the not B2 but R3 multifamily residential district is the appropriate zoning classification for the premises. After review, staff finds the proposed zoning amendment to be consistent with the city's 2013 plan, as well as the plan update Morgantown 2033 that's currently under review with city council, in terms of intent, location, pattern and character, and land management goals set forth in the planning documents. As such, staff recommends approval of the zoning map amendment.
Any discussion?
I favor the application because it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and that's the only question before us. As an aside, I think the intended use is wonderful, but that's not why we're here, and that's not what the law charges us to decide. What we're to decide is whether this is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the key, I think, is the core. And the key, I think, is the corridor issue. Now, we said in the plan that we wanted to revitalize these corridors and have walkable, attractive mix of commercial and residential uses. That's exactly what R3 does in this obviously important corridor of the city. So that's why I would vote that, and I would propose that we pass a resolution finding this consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Any other discussion?
I just want to thank the applicant for reconsidering this and hearing our concerns. I know, I appreciate that. It is, you're caught in a unique situation as we wait for the comp plan to come on board. And, you know, it does make you think, where is the nearest R3? But it is a less intense use, and I appreciate you all working with us on this.
Chair ready for a motion?
If we're done with discussion.
Yep. Moving forward, the application to city council with the recommendation that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the current comprehensive plan and the 2033 comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Second. Quick motion, second all in favor? Looks you down.
Thank you, council.
Okay, moving on to new business. Do you want to?
I make a motion that we rearrange our agenda and take as a first matter of new business, the application at case number 2306. Thank you. And the reason for this rearrangement is this is maybe a five-minute matter for us to deal with, as opposed to the other issues, which are much more comprehensive and demanding. And it's cruel and unusual to make somebody sit through all that if they otherwise choose not to. So that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we're, we'll go skip over to C then, MNS 23-06, City of Morgantown 797, Rockaway Avenue.
You can see, here's an arrow view of Marilla Park and the subject area. The city is requesting to subdivide 1.17 acres of tract of land, more or less, from tax district 10, tax map 30, parcel 203 for the construction of the new Marilla Pool complex. As a result, the newly formed and residual parcels of land will be in compliance with section 1335, oh five of the city's planning and zoning code regarding the following lot provisions in the R1A, and not the B1 neighborhood business district, but the R1A single-family residential district. And those minimums are the minimum lot size requirement of 3,500 square feet, as well as the minimum lot furniture of 30 foot. Here you can kind of see the kind of the general area, parcel 203 kind of wraps around the road that comes through that area, and on the right-hand side is the survey plat. That will conclude my report.
Ryan, you want to say something? You're a lawyer, you always want to say something.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. As Development Director Yeager noted, this subdivision will facilitate construction of the new Marilla Pool in this location at Marilla Park. Understand that we'll need to supplement with a letter of service availability, which has been requested and modified, the provided plat with the appropriate zoning designation comply with the conditions recommended in the staff report. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those, but otherwise ask that you approve the subdivision.
Any questions?
I have a question. This is a much larger parcel being chopped off than I was anticipating. It includes the playground and other, like, picnic amenities up there. Is there a reason that that was included? Is that going to affect our ability for redoing that playground and things like that?
This plat was prepared by the project engineer for the Marilla Pool project, so it's intended to include the disturbance of the construction project. One reason for the subdivision is that it's a mechanism for financing the project. New property will be security for the purchasers of the bonds that finance the project. So they've elected to include those potential improvements shown in the project boundary in order to assure that can go forward.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. That's fine, I'm going to get public comments unless you want to say something else.
Thank you.
Any member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone in opposition? Staff recommendations, please.
Staff recommends approval of the minor subdivision, continuing upon the conditions in the back there.
Move for approval, subject to sound conditions.
Second. Motion, second all in favor? Okay. The next item on the agenda is MNS 23-05, Mon County Development Authority and C and T Company LLC, Richwood Avenue. This is A and B, are we taking them together?
Yes, there's objection, I'll put that one back and forth. But we need to be individual. Of course.
Okay, that's fine.
I get the mention, I think that's enough.
You're too nice. I know plenty of judges that would say, that's not what we do.
While the applicant's finishing up, I'll go ahead and start with the report, and I'm going to be following the packet that's on the dais. There's the photos to give the report. So the applicant is seeking to consolidate approximately 58 parcels of land along Richwood Avenue into one parcel of land and rezone them to a B1 neighborhood business district. The arrow image here shows the approximate location as it pertains to the location in the Woodburn neighborhood, as well as downtown and WVU campus. The next slide shows the parcels to be consolidated in blue on the left and their current zoning designation on the right. The one parcel that is already currently zoned B1 is split zoned between a B1 and an R1A single-family residential district. The next slide shows the proposed consolidation of property, but as noted in the staff report, this would have to be updated to reflect the parcels to be consolidated and rezoned in addendum A, and that's critical. Addendum A, any motion made will be based on the parcels, or any consideration will be based on the parcels listed in addendum A. Additionally, the proposed consolidation and rezon of property would be in compliance with the minimum lot size, frontage, and depth requirements for the B1 district. Again, staff reviewed the 2013 comp plan and the 2023 comp plan, currently going through review at city council. The next several slides show maps side by side from the future land management plans for both of those documents. So the 2013 plan on the right identified the area along Richwood Avenue as a neighborhood 1. Neighborhood 1 is the oldest residential areas in the city surrounding downtown and WVU's campus. It encompasses most of the city's historic neighborhoods, as well as areas dominated by student renters. This neighborhood type has the highest density of buildings and the smallest lots. The district contains a mix of housing types ranging from older single-family homes to four-to-six unit apartment buildings to newly constructed multi-story apartment buildings, often within multiple housing types in the same block. Small-scale commercial or civic uses are also integrated into the neighborhood fabric. The blocks are small and generally flow of a grid pattern. This is the most walkable neighborhood areas in the community. On the right-hand side is the 2023 plan, which identified the same area as a residential type 1. For the most part, the description is the same. It just adds, and I'll just read the one sentence that really differentiates the two, "But in addition to residential uses, small-scale commercial uses may exist along major corridors." The next slide shows the future, or the proposed growth maps for the land management plan. In 2013, the plan appears to encourage growth and infill and redevelopment in the area in Richwood Avenue. So I know it's really hard to see on the screen, but in your packet, I labeled the Richwood Avenue, and that red area that's coming from downtown that kind of bleeds over to Richwood and then stops, really, is really the differentiation between infill development and preservation of existing neighborhoods and what the plan at the time considered potential growth and opportunity of economic development expanding out from the core area. And then on the plan on the right, the 2023 growth framework map shows that this same area is adjacent to the downtown and should be preserved, but also makes notes about trying to enhance and revitalize that neighborhood as well. Going to the 2013 land management plan, let me get further. In 2013, the area along Richwood Avenue is identified as a neighborhood revitalization, so that's the red circled area on the screen. In that orange coloring, the neighborhood revitalization classification is defined in the plan as stabilization and reinvestment in existing neighborhoods that includes improvements to public and private buildings and infrastructure, and support for infill development, adaptive reuse, and redevelopment that offers a mix of residential types and supporting uses. Appropriate development typologies include neighborhood in this area, depend on the context, and include single-family, two-family, multifamily, civic institutional, neighborhood centered mixed use, which includes commercial uses and green space. On the right-hand side of the screen, it shows the 2023 plan, which identifies this area as a residential mixed use. The 2023 plan defines residential mixed use as areas that are comprised of multifamily housing with ground floor activating commercial uses, particularly at or near street intersections to engage the public realm, streets, and parks. Buildings in these areas may be larger in scale with massing that steps down toward lower-scale residential areas. Parking should be located in the rear sides of the building and buffered from public amenities. Development typologies in the residential mixed use include two-family, multifamily, civic institutional uses, commercial, office, and open space. Similar to 2013 plan, Morgantown 2033 also identifies 11 land management development principles to consider. After review, the applicant's proposal appears to be consistent with the following principles, and I'll just read them off. Number three, increase opportunities to develop diverse housing options near schools, parks, shopping districts, and employment centers. And number six, facilitate economic activity in the city and ensure the availability of sites for incremental business growth and expansion. It should be noted that between the two planning projects, staff did conduct a small area study deemed Area 2, generally defined by Willy, Snyder, and Richwood Avenue in 2018. The study was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission and appended to the comprehensive plan. At the time, staff were also directed to draft zoning map and text amendments to implement the recommendations set forth in the plan to encourage redevelopment and private investment. As we know, that has not happened to date. While the plan generally stated that the R3 zoning should be strongly considered going forward in this general area from an economic development perspective, the study reads as follows. "A variety of neighborhood and pedestrian-scaled retail, commercial, and service businesses in conjunction with residential development in a mixed-use development pattern is highly desired within portions of the study area, particularly along Willy and Richwood Avenue. A mixed-use approach should serve to increase market interests of key tracks and permit developers to diversify risks." I would also add that we did receive three comments via email, two of them were in your packet, and one was, we received today from Mr. Whitmore, AICP, and that was included on the dais in front of you. And with that, I will conclude my report.
Thank you, Director Yeager. Appreciate the thorough review.
And the help that we hear, that we with the Mon County Development Authority have had throughout this process. My name is Eric Carlson, I'm with the Mon County Development Authority and the Morgantown Area Partnership, 265 Spruce Street, Suite 200. We're here today to talk about, to talk about the last three years we've been working on redevelopment in this area, and put up in front a number of boards to show what the plans are, as Director Yeager read off here, 2023 proposed plan and the 2013 approved plan, as well as what we are proposing with the B1 zone, where we believe that that is directly tied to both of those plans, and how we are also looking at the land that has been purchased to help continue what was planned with that with a step back as we head towards the single-family residents of the Woodburn neighborhood. So you can see on this board is what Director Yeager read off about the 2023 and 2013 plan. And at the risk of being pedantic, I don't want to appear that way towards the board, I would like to read out what the B1 zone is. I know we've got a large group here tonight, and there's been a lot of discussion in the community about what is the plan, what are we looking to do moving forward? And so I wanted to express why we picked the B1 zone, and this is directly quoting the Morgantown Code of Ordinances. "The purpose of the neighborhood business, B1 District, is to provide areas for convenient business uses, which tend to meet the daily shopping and service needs of the residents of an immediate neighborhood and which contain pedestrian-oriented, human-scaled construction that is designed to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood character. Because of the proximity to residential neighborhoods, high-quality design is essential in order to preserve the integrity of these neighborhoods." And that's something that, as a former development director in a different city, I want to compliment you guys for what you do call out in your zones, with materials, with heights. This is not something that is seen in every community. And because of that, we feel that what we would be doing as far as materials for the buildings are the types of things that would want to be seen in a community. And along with that, also still quoting from the ordinances, the ordinance, "The minimum permitted height in the B1 zone shall be two stories." So that's something that's very important. I know there has been talk about a strip mall. Strip malls are one-story with parking lots in front. That's not allowed in this zone. One, if we wanted to have a one-story building, which we do not, it would have to come back to the BZA as a conditional use. Two, parking is not allowed between the facade of buildings and the street. So that is something that will not occur.
Can I stop you for just a second? Kelly, do you need to say something?
Yes, I just need to say that I currently serve as a member of the Montague County Development Authority, in full disclosure.
I think you're going to have to recuse yourself and...
I don't, there's no personal, I don't have any personal gain.
Okay.
I mean, that's, I don't know who makes that.
Well, you make the call, but...
I mean, I feel that I can be unbiased. I don't have a, I...
It's the appearance, but it's your call.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Also, the maximum height of a principal structure in the B1 zone is limited to 40 feet above the finished grade. And so initially, when we were looking at a buy-right zone to go with, we had considered the B2 zone. And throughout this process, we have met a number of times with the Neighborhood Association in Woodburn. And in that process, it was made clear to us that a B2 zone was not something that was desirable. Also, when scaling back to the B1 zone, we have had a request for certain restrictions for uses within the B1, which we are more than happy to accommodate most of what is on the list, with one minor exception. And really, in a way, to make this what we had initially hoped to do as a PUD, going with this B1 zone with these restrictions, we see this a lot as a light version of a PUD that would really spell out and protect the...
Pardon me. Could you describe to our friends here what a PUD is?
Yes.
I'm sure everybody knows what we're talking about.
Yeah.
And the implications of a PUD?
Absolutely. A planned unit development, PUD, is an extraordinary zone that is created for a certain project. And when that is done, it is spout out exactly what you're going to do, or at the very least, what uses you believe you would want to do within that zone. And you're not allowed, after it's signed, sealed, and delivered, to alter that unless you go back through that PUD process once again, or change to a buy-right zone. And with that, it provides one extra level of public input than regular buy-right zones do, and that is an in-ward meeting of this body, not to occur not less than seven days before the planning commission meeting. And so in lieu of that, we, last week, last Wednesday night, so eight days prior to this meeting, myself, our CEO, Russ Rogerson, and Jay Rogers, the master planner for our development partner, once again, for the fifth or sixth time, met with the Neighborhood Association to talk about our plans, what we had filed, why we had filed them, and what we were planning moving forward. Because it has been very important, as this is a project of the Mon County Development Authority and the Morgantown Area Partnership, we are a quasi-governmental agency, we are a community-oriented organization, and we want to make sure that the community plays a role in everything we do. We are a... We are a partnership that includes memberships to the city, the county, both of which were, have helped fund our interest carry on this project, as well as the university, to ensure that we were able to get to this point where we have something to move forward with.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
You had said in different, I think you said in different neighborhood meetings, you decided to go with the, with this particular B1, and you're accepting certain restrictions. Is that right?
Yes.
How are you going to be held to accepting those restrictions?
We will be putting that in, so we will be putting that in the subdivision request. It is our understanding through Director Jaeger and City Council, with an S, Simonton, that putting that within the subdivision would keep those in place regardless in the future if there were to even be a zone change.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and one other point on the B1 that we think is, is one of the reasons we were attracted to this and think this is something that is amenable for the community, if not actually very much, it benefits the community. Director Jaeger mentioned that this is one of the more walkable parts of the community. Unfortunately, when you get off Richwood, it isn't so much. If there are sidewalks, it's on one side of the street. They're not, they're not at, you get proags for ADA, I'm sure, but they're not typically wide enough, they're not level. But the B1 requires sidewalks on every parcel that is built within the B1, and that is something that we are excited and looking forward to having this be a walkable area for all those involved. And you can see here on this board here on my left, on your right, 2023 Plan states that massing should step down towards lower-scale residential, as it did also in 2013 Plan, transition to lower-density residential adjoining the Woodburne neighborhood. You can see over here, in the orange is what we have labeled as the buffer area, and there is another color appearing within that area, which are parcels that are owned as well by the MCDA, that we are not seeking a rezone on to keep that as a single-family area. That is mixed between the R1A and the R2, and we have been in discussions with the city, as well as Mr. Rogers, who is the master planner for the developer, is on the board of the Housing Authority, to look at opportunities to have redevelopment of those parcels within the existing zones so that there are more housing options and would be able to be tied in through the Housing Authority, if that's something that they will in the end be interested in doing. And so we believe that this is a project that fits the, not only the will, but the law of the 2013 Plan and the intent of the proposed 2023 Plan, and we look forward to answering any of your questions. Speaking more with the public, as I mentioned, we've had a number of visits with the Woodburne Neighborhood Association. That doesn't stop after tonight. Once we get through this process, well, I imagine as we continue through this process, we'll once again meet with the Neighborhood Association, as well as after the rezone is hopefully approved, that we will continue meeting with them as plans are solidified and construction starts.
Any questions? Do you guys have more, or you want somebody else to come up?
We are, as I said, our president, CEO, Russ Rogerson, is here, as is Mr. Rogers. So if you have any questions that they would need to answer, we're happy to do that, and I'm happy to take your questions as well.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the House?
Discussion, not questions, so...
Go ahead. Do you want to do it after the public comments?
I would.
Okay. We look forward to it. Let's do that then. Okay. Any member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the petition?
Good evening. My name is John Trumbull. I am the president of the Woodburne Association of Neighbors, and I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of my friends, my neighbors, my neighborhood. I want to start off by thanking Eric and Russ for being willing to come meet with us. As they mentioned, multiple times over the last few years, this plan has changed, and so there have been many questions, and they've always been there to answer them, and I appreciate that. As they mentioned, Jay Rogers, the Omni Associates, joined us and the neighborhood last Wednesday for a special meeting of the Neighborhood Association. They brought many of these diagrams, and we're there to answer questions. This is obviously a very important and impactful project in our neighborhood, where my family lives, where many of our friends live, a place where we call home. And so because of the impact of this project, certainly, there have been many questions, many concerns. And so I have appreciated their willingness to work with us along the way, and I look forward to continuing to work with them in the future. I will say that the concepts that were presented to the neighborhood last week, a live, work, play concept, did seem to be received positively among the neighborhood. But I want to underscore the live part of that, that concept. This is a project that, as I said, is impactful, and if the intent is to preserve, enhance, integrate with our neighborhood, I think that it's imperative that, you know, it's not going to be 100%, but that residential be a part of this, a part of this plan, and that's some of the feedback that was given to them. Now, we, I took the feedback that was given to me by my neighbors, the conversations that we had last Wednesday, and we have submitted to the developer for consideration for restrictions on the subdivision. Not that I have necessarily a problem with many of these uses, but once again, the perspective that if this is a largely commercial zone, that it has to be a zone that is conducive to people living there. So I'm going to read through my list. I brought my spreadsheet, and I'm going to read through this list, and I'm happy to answer any questions after the fact. So these, these uses have been submitted for restriction for the subdivision, Assembly Hall, assisted living facility, charitable, fraternal, or social organization, churches or places of worship, dance or social club, youth. Drive-through facility, emergency shelter, funeral home, golf course, group residential facility, and group residential home. Kennel, commercial, outdoor flea market, passenger station, motor, bus, or railroad, pawn shop. And reuse of closed slash vacant school or church, though that one may be redundant. I think that's all I had to say. Any questions, follow-up for me?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the petition?
Just a quick question. Are we addressing both the subdivision and the zoning in the comments? Okay.
Sure.
First of all, let's support both of those. The subdivision, which they want to do...
Sir, if you state your name and address...
I'm sorry. You need my name.
Yep.
I'm Tom Shamberger at 812 Ridgeway Avenue in Woodburne, and part of the Neighborhood Association as well. The subdivision will go a long way to speeding any redevelopment in the area, and to support that. Also, support the B1 zoning. They've done a great job on this. They've kept us in the loop on this all the way through the project, and they have a really good, solid plan, and I think it fits well, and will tie in well with the businesses downtown as well. So please approve it.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the petition? Welcome back, Marty.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, thank you. My name is Marty Shamberger. I live at 812 Ridgeway Avenue, and it's great to see some old friends here tonight. I support the site, the revisions that we're here talking about tonight with the zoning and the minor subdivisions. Our neighborhood meeting started about two and a half years ago, on May 12th, with Mr. Robertson and Mr. Carlson. Over the years, we have seen the development evolve from a focus on townhomes and roads being moved, more recently to rezoning, to include neighborhood businesses with residential. As we all know, topography is a real challenge in Morgantown. We're limited with our river. We can't expand over that way, and we're limited in Woodburne because of our hills. It certainly presented some challenges. Currently, we do have pockets of B1 in the Woodburne area by Mario's Fishbowl up at Town Hill 2. So in those regions, we already have B1. Having lived in this area for 40-plus years, I've seen many changes. We have younger families moving in, as well as a lot of young professionals. We also have several Habitat for Humanity homes up on Shaw Place, and over a half a dozen Morgantown-Furnmount Housing Development Authority homes called the Homecoming Homes. I know there was a concern about housing, affordable housing, and I think that exists as well as if we look at Unity Manor, which is close by. But it's not to say that there isn't room for more, but I think we have to remember what already exists. I think this would be an enhancement to our neighborhood, as well as to our downtown. I've appreciated the latest discussions with MAP and Omni that have certainly helped me make the decision to support this project. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the petition? Okay, anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the petition?
Good afternoon. My name is Brennan Williams, and I live at 93 McKinley Avenue in the Woodburne District. I'm also a member of the Woodburne Neighborhood Association. Also, would like to take a second to thank everybody involved. I know that Russ and Eric. I've only been here for two years in the community, but it is not very often we get to deal with a developer who, or a property owner who is, makes himself available to the neighborhood, so we certainly appreciate y'all's help on that front. And also to staff for, I thought this is a very good staff report, well, well-thought-out, and the analysis was spot-on for the most part. I just have one small kind, and actually, I guess technically I am opposed, but I want to put the caveat to this application that just as, to this application as requested. So looking at the Comprehensive Plan for 2013, it's very rare that we have a Comprehensive Plan that has a specific area to look to for the intent of a rezoning, namely the subject property. And the only thing that I take issue with is that in the area of opportunity, the predominantly residential use is suitable for proximity to WU's campus and downtown. Although Eric did state that the purpose of the B1 zoning in words does match this intent of being predominantly residential. Unfortunately, the uses and, and just the scale of this rezoning request, there is a lot of preclusions to different types of housing types. So I would propose that if, since this is an advice that goes to council, that, that the Planning Commission possibly recommend an overlay that would allow those different use types. So this would kind of accomplish a PUD without having to go through all of the onerous and things like that, the red tape that I'm sure developers and everybody wants to avoid. And also, too, one thing I do like the B1 zoning is the parking requirements. Again, this being such a larger rezoning, I do like that it's a reduction to only 75% of the parking requirements. But this to be a pedestrian-friendly, mixed-use development, I do think, from what we've seen, I know that the developer's not beholden to what they showed us at our last neighborhood meeting, is that this, it does appear to be overparked. So my concern is that if we do want this to be truly mixed-use, pedestrian-oriented, that we maybe in an overlay kind of talk about, maybe there's a case-by-case kind of approval of looking at beyond off-street parking on the premises. So that is one concern of mine. But with that, that was my only concern. Like I said, I'm technically opposed, but only of how this was presented. But otherwise, I think this does meet the intent of the Comprehensive Plan, but that one section of an opportunity, or area of opportunity is kind of a unique situation. So I appreciate your time and appreciate your service to the city of Morgantown. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Let's do staff recommendations on first the lot consolidation. Do you have two different staff recommendations, I assume?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's do the lot consolidation first. And let me ask, is, and it's probably not a question for you, is the lot consolidation contingent upon the rezoning? For example, you don't want it consolidated if it's not going to be rezoned, or you don't care, you can get it consolidated, and then you work with the zoning?
Would you mind just speak up?
Oh, I've never had anybody tell me they can't hear me. It's usually not an issue. So my question to him was whether they wanted to go ahead and consolidate the lots, whether or not the zoning reclassification was passed. That was my question to him.
Yeah, we would like that regardless. It is something that is one of the requirements on our refinancing through our bank.
Okay.
And it also, one of the, it struck me as an odd thing to do, honestly, initially, and the more and more I look at it, it's another one of those steps for the so-called PUD-light, because that way, anytime we build a structure, we have to come back for another subdivision. We have to come back to this body, because a parcel is only allowed to have one principal structure on it. So that gives further opportunity to ensure that what's going there is what was expected, what is planned, and, you know, even though we couldn't build something that is outside of the zone anyway, that's something we wanted to make sure that there was that extra check and balance along the way.
Okay. And the only reason I ask is because some people will say, I don't want this if I'm not going to get the other.
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So if you want to do, anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, you can do the staff recommendations.
After review, staff recommends that the minor subdivision application be approved by the Planning Commission with the following contingencies that are listed in your application. I would note that the applicant did provide a letter of service availability. I didn't make it into your packet, but it has been provided to us, so we would remove that condition from the packet. And then the discussion, and maybe the developer or the MCDA would like to talk about this, but if they wanted to put any restrictions into that minor subdivision.
Yeah. On our initial application, we included pawn shop, group residential home, group residential facility, and golf course as restrictions. We are fully amenable to all but one of the requests of the neighborhood, the one being, and if possible, we would like a partial restriction on Assembly Hall if this is...
and if possible, we would like a partial restriction on Assembly Hall if this is something that is allowed under the zoning ordinances, or of the ordinances, to take it from a permitted use to a conditional use. Other than that, we are perfectly happy and have given Director Jaeger a list showing assisted living facility, charitable, fraternal, or social organization, churches, places of worship, dance or social club youth, drive-through facility, emergency shelter, funeral home, golf course, group residential facility, group residential home, kennel, commercial, outdoor flea market, passenger station, motor bus railroad, pawn shop, and reuse of closed/vacant school or church to be added in the subdivision as restrictions for this property.
Okay, and you say you've given Ricky that list?
Yes.
So if there's any motion to do this, that would be under the rezoning one rather than the?
It'd be under the subdivision.
I do this one?
It'd be this one.
This is just a lot consolidation, right?
Correct.
Right, with regard to these restrictions, Mr. President, it's a private, we're not regulating those restrictions. That's something they're going to put in, and I'll defer to Mr. Giannola, but it seems to me that's something you're going to put in the chain of title to satisfy your neighbors and the concerns about the development of the property. Is that how this is going down?
We, it's a little bit more difficult to do it that way.
And this is James Giannola.
Sorry, Counsel for the MCDAs.
My honor.
It's a little bit difficult to do it that way, especially once you do the subdivision, because you have the individual lots. And one of the reasons, obviously, the planner can tell you, you know, too, if, without the minor subdivision, we would have, whatever it is, fifty-three rezoning requests. And by doing this, now, we bring it into a, one parcel, and that parcel, for example, if I wanted to build whatever, I would have to come back to the Planning Commission. Those restrictions need to be in the subdivision and not in the deeds. And the reason being is that the subdivision, a developer, could agree to change those restrictions, because it's limited to that subdivision. Okay, but if it's part of the zoning in the subdivision, then it goes with the zoning, and then the city is the only one that can change it. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Very good explanation. Thank you.
Yeah, so. Okay, and that list is going to be incorporated into?
The survey plat.
Well, this, not only the survey plat, but the staff recommendations?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we're voting on, should somebody make that motion?
Correct.
Okay. Just making sure.
And may I speak, Mr. President?
Sure.
We, as a comment was made about the overlay, whether it's an overlay, or I know Charlie, during his earlier presentation, had mentioned that the PRO is something that was going to be looked at after the comprehensive plan. If B1 were to have text amendments for different types of housing, that is certainly not something we would protest.
I don't think we can do that. We can't do that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody? Any more discussion? Any other questions?
Well, are we into staff recommendation first, or?
Did we do that?
So staff recommendation, that would include the full restrictions listed here. As we just discussed, though, the partial restriction would not be able to be facilitated, so it would not be included in that, in the motion.
So Assembly Hall would just be permitted, not?
Correct.
The conditional one?
Yes, the conditional.
We can't make something conditional, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
You can restrict it, but to make it conditional?
Then just take it. No, sorry. I think I can speak on behalf of the neighborhood that we're willing to make that concession. They've been, they've been good to work with.
Are you done with your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Well, I support this application, and I've been around just long enough to remember the Whorf District project when we decided, and the mayor will agree with me, and the other mayor will agree with me, you know, that those parcels weren't consolidated, and you saw what happened. And you see now what that means when you don't organize an effort like this, as these gentlemen are doing here tonight. So I ask my fellow commissioners to support the application, make a motion to do so, subject to the staff conditions.
This is only on the subdivision?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Second.
Have a motion, second, and this is just for lot consolidation subdivision. All in favor? Opposed?
Okay. Yep, so let's do the. I guess we, did we, I think we already talked about everything else. We just need your staff recommendation.
On the minor subdivision.
On the minor subdivision.
The zoning amendment request should be evaluated on their land use merits alone. Development intentions are extraneous, and the commission should consider the request on its merits as a land use decision. In conducting such an analysis, the commission should determine if the B1 neighborhood business district is the appropriate zoning classification for the premises, weighing all possible future development, and land use scenarios as permitted in the Planning and Zoning Code, particularly 1345 B1 Neighborhood Business District and Table 13310501 Permitted Land Uses. Attributae, staff finds that the proposed zoning amendment to be consistent with the city's 2013 comprehensive plan, as well as the plan update Morgantown 2033, currently under review by Morgantown City Council with respect to the intent, location, pattern, and character, and land management goals set forth in the planning documents.
Discussion there.
So much discussion. A couple of questions, I guess. I don't want to say great minds think alike, but I clearly don't want to say that. Mr. Williams, who spoke during the public comments, is a very talented city planner, and we are happy to have him in the neighborhood. I also have open on my computer here the 2018 Small Area Plan, where it discusses overlay districts and the possibility of that. I do think that that is something that we would potentially like to see happen, to allow for various types of residential uses here. When this was initially proposed to the neighborhood, you know, three years ago, or longer even, when we began on this journey with the Development Authority, it was supposed to be a PUD. We have gone through, I understand that technically it meets the 2013 comprehensive plan in saying that it should be a mixed use, and this is mixed use, but I highlighted many parts of our packet here where it talks about neighborhood revitalization is redevelopment that offers a mix of residential types. Like, I also highlighted the same thing Mr. Williams highlighted, in that redevelopment with a mix of higher density predominantly residential uses suitable for proximity to campus and downtown. The growth framework map suggests that existing neighborhoods be preserved, and where appropriate, encourage a mix of housing types. I would like to point out to everyone that the only residential allowed in B1 is a mixed use building, so commercial on the bottom, potentially residential on the top, but that does not even mean that there has to be residential on the top. That could be office space, it could be a number of things. There's nothing guaranteeing that there will be residential. Now, we have talked with the developers and the representatives of the Development Authority, and they assure us that that is in the plans. My concern is always if all of those guys get hit by a bus tomorrow and someone else takes the property over, what are they going to want to do with it? That's essentially how I take all of these cases, right? I do think that we are all very disappointed in the lack of potential diverse housing types, and I would love to work on potentially an overlay that would allow for those. I know that that doesn't guarantee that anything is going to happen. I would like to make it a possibility, though, for maybe, you know, a duplex, some townhomes, anything that would add to our affordable housing stock. I don't think anyone is going to argue that what is there now is better than what is being proposed. Clearly, it's blighted property as it stands, and the city does need some infill development, certainly. I look at our budget, I would love nothing more than some extra commercial, you know, BNO taxes coming in. I just, I want to make sure we're not losing sight of the fact that we have a low housing stock for workforce and professional housing. And I have spoken with the gentlemen, and there are some properties that they do own that are not currently part of the rezoning effort here. And as Mr. Carlson said during his comments, I look forward to working with them and the Fairmont-Morgantown Housing Authority to hopefully redevelop some of that bordering property into some workforce housing. I think that that's severely missing in our community.
And if I may, Commissioner and Counselor, one of the things that's really the aim of this neighborhood is for it to be a lively place, and if you're going to have a walking, walkable area that has, whether it's retail, restaurants, brew pub, something like that, you need people, you need feet on the street, and the best way to do that is have people living there. And so, in talking with our development partner, they say it is very easy to assume and to say that we will have more housing units in this development than currently exist on these fifty-three-plus structures that we have in the area now. How many more than that? Time will tell. But that is something that is very important to the Mon County Development Authority, and the good news is, it would have to be a lot of buses. One could take me out, but it takes nine to have a quorum at the MCDAs, and I'm not even one of the voting members. So, this is why we stepped in when we did to purchase this property, because we're long-term members of the community, the partnership, the MCDAs helped form the Morgantown area partnership, so we could all pull on the same side of the rope and ensure that the community grows in a way that benefits the community, not necessarily benefiting one particular entity or another.
I look forward to our future collaboration to make sure that this is a benefit not only to the city, but also to our neighborhood, and working to make sure that it works for everyone.
I agree with everything you said. These have been my concerns, and when you look at the new comp plan, we talk about the missing middle, and that's what we don't have, and that is a concern for me, if we don't have these duplexes and quadruplexes and townhomes, you know, to have that gradual step up and have that be a way to help achieve a more reasonable price of home that's available for college students and, you know, faculty and all of us, right? So that is something, you know, that our comp plan, new comp plan calls for, and I don't have any assurance that that can be made without, you know, a mutual agreement between the applicant and the city, because I agree, I understand that you have the best of intentions, I really appreciate that, but I've been burned too many times, you know, and seen residents burned too, and they did have that understanding with the 2018 plan that additional steps would take place to help put those initiatives into action, and it didn't happen for, who knows, lots of reasons, certainly nothing ill, but I would love to see that happen, too.
Can I ask a question on that, actually? So. I was not here at the time, maybe some of my fellow commissioners were. The 2018 Small Area Plan for Area 2, it was approved by the Planning Commission. Why did it not go through council?
I don't know. From reading the report, from reading the report, though, it looked like that there was an initiative in the plan in 2013 that called to say to do this, and the Small Area Plan being completed was a recognition that that task or implementation requirement in the plan was completed. So that's why they used the terminology appendage to the report, as opposed to an amendment to the plan that would say, "This is what needs to be done."
I'm just looking at this fifty-eight-page document, wondering how much the city paid for that to say, "Check the box, throw it away."
No, but to that, I think, and to some of the folks that spoke, I think, I mean, there was a, I think there was a good discussion in that report, right? The report was more geared towards doing another use to permit more housing types, but it also wanted to be more attractive to the private sector, right? So that's why they were talking about text amendments to try to maybe get some more uses that would make it attractive to a commercial or a private developer, as well as the overlay districts to try to minimize any issues there. I mean.
This seemed very focused on R3 as opposed to like a B district.
Right, but we, right.
Just to follow up, I mean, I had some, the exact same issues with this, but I didn't have the solution of overlay or potential, and maybe I still don't understand, but I don't want to make sure I understand, so maybe the public understands, too. Right now, under B1, the only approved use would be mixed use dwelling, as far as the dwelling use, right?
Correct.
An overlay district would potentially allow the other dwelling categories to be inserted into the area.
Correct.
It'd be used as a buffer between the main area and the existing neighborhood, right?
And that's as opposed to doing a text amendment, where then you would be changing?
You open up for the entirety of the zone.
Right.
Yeah, I think, if I may, Commissioner C., what you said is a wonderful point, and it's, I used to live in a neighborhood that was designed by Frederick Lowenstein in Lexington, Kentucky, and I got to live there because they had fourplexes built into each block, and it's, as I've gone into development, that is, you know, everyone has a picture of Frederick Lowenstein on their wall if they're ACIP, but they just do blanket, single-style zoning. And that neighborhood, I still couldn't afford a house in today, but I could afford to live in that fourplex. So I think that's something that's really unique about this redevelopment, this rezone, because we're not asking for a quarter-acre parcel to be rezoned. We're asking for a ten-acre rezone that gives an opportunity for, as the city is going through finishing the comp plan, to then be able to tinker with the zones or create overlays to allow something like that, and I think this is something that, you know, could be a model for communities around the country, that if this is done, that you can start to see that type of use put into districts and give everybody the opportunity to walk to work, to walk to a grocery, to walk home after meeting some friends for a drink, or bicycle, or, and then still get in their car and drive somewhere if they so choose.
So rezoning, Mr. President, rezoning this B1, you know, I think it's apparent, no, it's obvious that B1 is consistent with both the current comprehensive plan and the about-to-be-borne comprehensive plan. I don't think that's controversial at all, and so I agree with the staff's recommendation in that regard. And that's our mission tonight, is to determine forward to council or advice on whether that is consistent with the plan or not. You know, is this a perfect project? Well, you know, Mr. Whitmore is a thoughtful guy. I don't know if you had a chance to read what he left there. You know, he sees this as a real risk that we would get haphazard and low-quality development, while the happy circumstance is the owner here is, could not be more committed to the quality development of this community. So whether or not the owner then brings developers in, I'm confident that with regard to the project, I know we shouldn't be talking about, this is going to be administered correctly. City Council has the power here to approve or deny this application. Our role is to see whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, and I think that it clearly is.
I think we would be doing a disservice by not hitting pause and trying to look at maybe an amendment to that 2018 plan, or something else, just because of the community buy-in that went into that plan, even though we're not certain of the ultimate outcome that happened to it, because that was the process the community participated in, and I don't get the feeling that they have complete confidence in the ultimate outcome of it all. Not, again, not that I don't believe that it would be something good, but I, you know, I would like to see us try to take that additional step.
I think you make a good point, Katie, but it's just not the law. The law doesn't say we have to see that it's consistent with every plan that we can find in the office. The law says that it is a consistent with the comprehensive plan that City Council enacted, the public participated in, and the City Council enacted, so it's all about the comp plan, it's not about anything else.
Unfortunately for us, they did not move. Unfortunately for us, they did not move to make that an addendum to the plan.
Right. So, therefore, it's not relevant to what we're doing here tonight.
Ready for a motion?
Can I ask one question? I mean, if we go back to the 2013 plan and the same verbiage as in 2023, that on page 65, it says that this area should be the highest-density buildings, mix of housing types. So, how is this a mix of housing types if we don't have the overlay piece to it? It's inconsistent with that.
That's B1.
Do you have a response, Ricky?
Yeah.
He's disagreeing with your conclusion.
No, 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 I understand. I kind of look at this, to wait to achieve, right, like in the Area 2 plan, there was the strong push for the R3, but there was also the intent of trying to get more retail uses into it. Right now, the R3 does not include retail uses at all. It doesn't include some of the things that would make a private developer want to get in on that type of project. So, I think, yes, while there was discussion, and rightly so, of trying to have a mix of housing types, at the same time, there was other things advocated for to make it a mixed-use development that are precluded in the R3 district now. That was proposed in the A2.
I'm not proposing R3. I mean, I'm just saying that, you know, if we can make the intent of this plan, the mixed-use, I love the idea of what they're proposing, I just don't see the housing in there. And if we could add to it by an overlay or whatever, then it makes sense that that would fulfill the comprehensive plan 2013 and 2023.
So, tell me, Ricky, we keep talking about an overlay, but what's in front of us is the whole thing's going to be B1. What's the mechanism of creating this overlay if we ask this to be rezoned and City Council agrees? What's the mechanism for creating the overlay after the fact if the developer doesn't come to us or the owner doesn't come to us and say, "I want this overlay"?
Maybe the similar process that Williles Hill followed to create the overlay district there, where this, it was more of a combination, I believe, and I wasn't here at the time, obviously, but working with the Neighborhood Association there and the community in that neighborhood and working with city administration to put together a proposal to protect, in that instance, the height of development around Williles Hill.
Right. But what I'm saying is, we give them B1, okay? And then we have to go back after the fact and say, "Oh, by the way, here's your overlay." And they're saying, "Hey, well, wait a minute. We financed this based on ABC and now we're going to lose our financing." Now what?
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't think that anything that has been discussed with the overlay so far hasn't really precluded anything that, I don't think that the developer wouldn't be interested, just saying there's an opportunity for, right, outside of the dwelling mixed-use zoning classification or mixed-use building classification.
And, I mean, I know Rocky, I don't know the other guys. I know you're Mon County Development Authority, so you have a stake in the community, but the number of times I've heard developers come in here and say, "Oh, yeah, we're interested in this, we're going to do this." And then as soon as they get out here and get what they want, the whole thing changes. So, we got to have a pro, if we're talking about an overlay to protect the neighborhood and they're talking about, "We're interested in the overlay," we got to have a mechanism to create that overlay after the fact or create it now, I think. Right. Right.
I don't necessarily...
Rocky knows, but I don't think there's one.
If I may, too, and I apologize, I did some cutting and pacing and I'm not sure if this was from the 2023 or 2013 plan, where it talks about diverse housing, increase opportunities to develop diverse housing options near schools, parks, shopping districts, and employment centers. And then it says, "Complete neighborhoods include a variety of land uses, residential, commercial, civic, and recreational areas, building types and housing types, to increase access to amenities and services for diverse and multi-generational neighbors. A mix of residential dwelling types will be located within walking distance and/or biking distance from amenities." This neighborhood, I mean, this rezone is not the entirety of a neighborhood, it is not a neighborhood unto itself. It is amenity for the neighborhood that it surrounds, that surrounds it, which includes single-family housing, includes duplexes, includes apartments, includes senior living with Unity Manor having 122...
That's just the point our friends in Woodburner were making.
Exactly. And it includes the dorms on WVU's campus. This helps create that true neighborhood instead of there being different areas with different zones. This helps make that Woodburn, Richwood area, the area behind Arnold Hall, all of that a neighborhood, because it has, finally, that neighborhood center.
And I get that, and I don't disagree with you, but...
But I think, you know, you've got here on the map a buffer area, right?
Yes.
What's to protect that buffer area? Is that within your rezoning?
No, that's not being rezoned. We own five parcels on there and, well, actually, I think it's six parcels because it's one where we have a house across parcel lines, because why not? But that we have not requested for rezone, and those are the areas that we're going to look with the Housing Authority.
So, when you were talking about the overlay, where were you proposing that?
I wasn't proposing a thing.
Okay.
I was saying that we would welcome the opportunity to do other housing options. We initially were looking at the B2 because that offered townhomes and that offered multifamily dwellings that didn't have mixed use. Unfortunately, it also offered strip malls, it offered a lot of different things that gave the neighborhood real heartburn. And so, that's why we zoned down in our plans to the B1. I think when you look at the fact that every residential zone, except for R1 and R1A, allows townhomes, and then the B2 and the B3 also allow townhomes, frankly, it seems to be an oversight that the neighborhood zone does not allow a neighborhood type of residential dwelling like a townhome. So, I think there are opportunities, whether it is through text amendments or through other options down the road, for uses to be added to this neighborhood. We're talking 10 acres, this isn't going to be built next year, it's going to start next year.
So, if I may, just to point out in the code, for instance, a shopping center, small...
Small, medium, and large scales not permitted in the B1. A multi-use, non-residential, residential dwelling which could have more than one use that's not residential requires a conditional use. So, that would require to go, to talk about the strip center and those things being built, that would require to have to go to BZA to get approval for something where you had a building that had multiple uses that did not include residential in them.
Can I ask another question? Is it possible, this is my first foray into something kind of this complicated, right? We've had pretty, pretty run-of-the-mill cases before the Planning Commission in my time here. We haven't dealt with overlays before during my time. And I don't see this as something that would put additional restrictions on this property. I would see an overlay as something that would add possibilities to this property. Is it possible for us to recommend approval to City Council with recommendation to consider an overlay that would allow other residential types?
I mean, you can make that recommendation, but it can't be included, I don't think, in requirement to approve it.
No, just, you should probably consider, who does overlays? Would that be the Planning Commission or would City Council be able to apply an overlay?
We have to recommend.
So, we have to recommend it.
We would hold a workshop, we would meet with the neighborhood, yeah. Yes, that's the process that we have to use.
So, if I could...
Sure.
So, sometimes we think worst-case scenarios, right? And so, I think maybe what you're saying is if this was, if none of this was residential, if none of this was mixed use, what you're saying is that would still be a good thing for the neighborhood. It still would be a buffer area between a more commercial area, the downtown area, and the R1 area. And maybe that's the way we kind of look at this and say, "Are we okay with it being that?" Yeah, we'd like to have more dwelling use, mixed use, maybe overlays or whatever, but that's, I think that's what he is discussing at this point in time, so...
But I think in B1, there has to be residential, right? The mixed use, no, it could all be commercial.
Right. That's what they were talking about, the dwelling mixed use is the opportunity to do apartments with...
But that's the only one of the dwelling that's appropriate.
Yeah, I heard some comments in the back. It fiscally, it would not work if this was commercial only, because, well, one, trying to lease second floors for something that is anything other than residential is very difficult, especially when you're not in the downtown. And when you look at vacancy rates in the downtown now, as is, it's pretty difficult in the downtown, too. So, if this is, and being that we can't make them one stories unless the BZA approves it, and I can tell you, I'd put my foot down if a developer's going to want to use any of this land to be one-story, but we've got, just the money that's already in it makes that not a viable approach. So, to have multiple stories requires residential above the ground floor. And the good news is, too, because there is not allowed first-floor residential right now in the B1, you don't have dead zones because, you know, when you're trying to make a new, modern, 21st-century-style neighborhood, you don't want residential on the first floor because it really takes away the liveliness of an area.
Just making one other point, just looking through the permitted land use table, for instance, even though R3 is geared more towards residential, right, includes those uses to family, townhomes, everything. For instance, a florist shop is a conditional use. So, even in R3, somebody could build a florist shop or put one in an existing building, standalone, just as by an example.
And this is, this is a heat map I made of the use table where everything in green is allowed in both the R3 and the B1. Everything that's orange is a step back from permitted to conditional, and everything in red is something that was either permitted or conditional that's flat-out not allowed in the B1. It is unfortunately not an opportunity for us to consider the R3. One, there's just way too many things that go out the table, including our developer and our refinancing.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No, I would just want to, I said it was apparent that this is, B1 is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and here's why. We are encouraging in some, assembling consolidation of parcels for redevelopment in the comprehensive plan. We're also encouraging infill redevelopment in the comprehensive plan, making it a priority, in fact, and as it should be. And we're also encouraging development along traffic corridors. All three of those things are happening here. I think this is clearly consistent with the comprehensive plan and I think we should vote in that regard. As far as the extraneous controls that we've been discussing, again, I think that's beyond the scope of what we're tasked to do here by the law.
Any other discussion?
For future reference, I would like us to reevaluate some of our zoning. As Mr. Carlson pointed out, townhomes and multifamily dwellings are not allowed in our neighborhood business district, but it's allowed in other business districts, which makes no sense to me.
I agree. In your spare time.
We should pass the planning...
Let's work on it.
Any volunteers in the audience? If there's no more discussion, I am ready for a motion.
I move before the application to City Council with the finding that the application for rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend enactment.
The motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor? Opposed?
Good luck, Jonathan. We'll count on you.
Okay, committee reports. Do you want me to wait till... Committee reports? No.
Did you have your dinner yet? Did you have dinner before you came?
I only eat once a day. I'm old, I eat up the calories, so I have a toast for breakfast.
We're still in a meeting!
Hey, we're still meeting here, so if you guys... Any committee reports?
No committee reports. Just, I just want to welcome Kelly on board as our new commissioner of city representation.
Ms. Nina Cosley.
You see how it's going to go, right?
And I just wanted to wish everybody a safe and happy Veterans Day and thank the two gentlemen up here for their service to our country.
Director Jaeger, are there any updates on your staffing levels? Do you have any potential planners on the radar?
We're making changes to the job descriptions or will be, and we'll be posting them.
Please, please.
We need a planner so we can work on some rezoning now.
Yes.
Okay. Any other staff comments?
Okay. We're all ready to go, and I'm right behind us.